Good evening and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of Wednesday, November 15th, 2023. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that we all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers past and present. Thank you. First thing we have this evening is an announcement. I'd like to announce that the next scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, November 29th, here at Town Hall. Moving along to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting, we have the approval of a six-month extension request for a comprehensive permit case number 2020-8, One Anderson Way, with an expiration date of November 5th, 2023. The comprehensive permit was approved at the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, which significantly impeded its ability to exercise its rights under the comprehensive permit. I think, I believe, we have Attorney DeChesys here this evening. He's counsel for the petitioner. Attorney DeChesys, I guess if you could just elaborate a little further. Is there anything that we should know?
Quite frankly, this is a case that we initially filed in March of 2020, and it got extended to a lot of part of 2021. The special permit was granted. We missed a couple of rounds of funding with the state, and we recently secured funding, albeit at, well, the level we anticipated. But over the three years, the cost of goods and services have gone up, and we're planning to start construction within the next 60 days.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Seems like a valid reason as to why they would need an extension.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we all agree that the cost of materials have gone up, and whatever they budgeted is probably not enough, at least initially. Any questions, gentlemen?
No questions.
Thank you. So I guess at this point, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the extension for permit case 2020-8 for One Anderson Way, with an expiration date to be...
No, no, just six months.
Six months from the November 2023, I believe.
Yes, November 5th.
Six months.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a nice evening, Mr. DeChesys. All right, moving on to the public portion of the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. It's variance case ZAV 23-6, which was last continued from September 6th, 2023. The petitioner is Pasca Mansit Land Company LLC. The subject property is at 481 Fons Corner Road, MAP 63, Lot 11-17. The property lies within the Office Industrial and Marijuana Overlay Districts. We've already had a motion to waive the reading of the abudaz list at a prior hearing. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a variance to construct a four-story, 64-unit residential apartment building, and is seeking relief under Article 22, Section 375-22.2, allowed uses. So for the viewers at home, this is an office park district. Its actual title is Office Industrial and Marijuana Overlay District, and the petitioner is seeking to construct a 64-unit apartment building, which is a residential use. And we have here before us, who's actually been before us on other dates on this matter, Attorney Bobrowski. You've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members. We're here again to discuss whether or not it's appropriate to grant a use variance for a 64-unit proposed apartment complex in lieu of the 18,000-square-foot office building that was approved a couple of years ago. I think we've had enough experience with the pandemic to understand that office is pretty much a bygone use, particularly given the vacancy rates that are currently out there, which I cited in the materials that I provided to. I think my research indicated to me that nationally, according to the Downtown Office to Residential Conversion Pilot Program, and the, more importantly, the EDG's National Office Report, the national vacancy rate for office space in October of last, of this year is 17.8%. So it's sort of dead on arrival. And what we'd like to do is get the use variance in order to put in a proposed 64-unit apartment building. So I'll walk you through the criteria for a variance, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. First, the variance has to be predicated upon soil conditions shaped topography. This lot has some challenges for an office building in that there's a steep grade, and it much more accommodates an apartment or residential building with the floor, the lower floors being able to exit out according to the grade. Phil Cordero, our engineer, is here tonight, and he can explain that. Let me walk you through the other two components of a variance under Section 10. Secondly, we need to show substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. As I indicated, this office building is, in this current economic climate, not going to get built. It's just not economically feasible. So we propose to do what Mayor Wu is proposing in downtown Boston. If you're not going to come to work in the center of the city anymore, let's take the offices and convert it into residential space. And she's announced a pilot program to begin that process. If it's good enough for Boston, it's good enough for Dartmouth. Lastly, with regard to the detriment potential to the neighborhood, we think that this is going to have nothing of that sort. There's traffic associated with the offices more predictably going to be peak hour-related. With an apartment complex, the people will come and go. Peak hours will not be as congested with traffic as they would be for an office building which comes to work at something between 8:30 and 9:30, and exits from work somewhere between 4:30 and 5:30. The apartment complex will have uses or trips spread out more evenly throughout the day. If I could ask Phil to explain the topographical constraint. I think it's an important component of our request this evening, and he can do a better job of it than I will.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major Associates, a professional engineer having an office at 10 Main Street in Lakeville. We've presented in front of the board previously relative to this application, and I'm happy to provide the refresher relative to the topography on the site that we're experiencing. Those familiar with the property at Pasca Mansit, we have the existing driveway where I am is Fons Corner Road. Pasca Mansit, the driveway extends deeply into the site, which is the subject area for the use variance that Attorney Bobrowski represented. We have a driveway that bisects the site from grading purposes from north to south. We have a grade change from approximately elevation 156 at the existing driveway down to 145 and 140 down in the lower southeast corner of the property. And what we look to do when we navigate grade changes of that degree, we have two choices: work with the grade, or we re-envision the grade. In terms of re-envisioning, it ends up being a situation where we cut the grade down to make a flat plateau and haul the material off the site, do the inverse of that, which is to fill the site to make the flat plateau, which requires the importation of the material. In this case, given the challenge, what we'd look to do is balance the site, which is utilize the topography where the residential use here that we're seeking the variance on certainly accommodates that, which is to have varying levels of exposed height to the building. So on the higher side, the northerly portion, we would have that portion exposed at three-story. And then on the lower side, where we can have the 10 feet of grade change that the natural topography already has, we can accommodate with that walkout portion on the lower topography, and the driveway will slope on both sides of the building to allow access throughout. We've found it a very effective means to not require importation of material and not require export of material, which, as part of the cost implications of that, can also greatly reduce the number of truck trips that you may experience on any construction site that we're seeking to avoid here. So I'm happy to walk through in greater detail if you'd like to learn more about the site and sort of how we've preliminarily engineered it for this use.
I've heard enough, but I can only speak for myself. Gentlemen, is there anything else you would like him to elaborate on?
At this time?
No, not at this time.
That you're going from 150-something elevation down to 140. That's almost, it's about 15, 16 feet.
That's the takeaway point, sir, is approximately 16 feet from high to low across the natural site as it exists today.
Any questions, gentlemen? I have no questions.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of points in conclusion. One is that there was an updated traffic study done by, I believe it was McMahon Associates, and that's dated the 30th of the last month. And I think their conclusion was that the traffic generated by the 64 units will be less, particularly during peak hour, than the 18,000-square-foot office building. So that should be in your file.
I did see that. You're pointing to, is that a conclusion?
I just looked at the charts, and I think that he had a comparative chart there. The other is that we've...
Can you point that out to me?
I'm sorry, I don't have a copy with me.
You don't have it. Do you know where it is? You're better at this traffic stuff than I am.
I think it's the last one.
Table four? I'll give you a moment to look at it, if you can point it out to me. Please.
Page five?
I see it in the first paragraph of the conclusion on page six, and I'll just read it out for our viewers at home. The conclusion of this engineer is that, based on a review of the trip generation data provided within this assessment, the current build program for the proposed development at 461 493 Fons Corner Road is anticipated to result in fewer vehicle trips than the previous build program submitted in September of 2019, that being the commercial-type office building. As such, the anticipated traffic operations at the proposed site driveways on Fons Corner Road are projected to continue to operate under capacity during both weekday morning and weekday afternoon peak hour in line with the conclusions of the previous traffic assessment data September 4th, 2019. That I had read, but I didn't know. You were saying that there's some table or chart that supports that.
I think what they did, they included the two other commercial buildings, and they did the overall, and they concluded that the overall will be less than what's, with the residential will be less than if it was an 18,000-square-foot commercial building.
Table three has some of that information, and Table four does as well.
They calculated that based on two other commercial buildings, not just one.
Well, this is all part of that. This building is part of, right?
All approved.
The common driveway is for the other two also, correct?
No, I think those proposed two others are going to be built across the way.
Right, but they're all included in the analysis.
Exactly.
I apologize, I thought I'd...
My other question for the board is whether or not we've adequately explained the sewer connection that we seek as part of the, not your approval, but the approval that we will seek from the appropriate people at the DPW. And I'm wondering if there are any questions about that. We've submitted a couple of memos.
So if I understand this correctly, the assessment that they made here is based on the premise that there would be a commercial building, one commercial building or two commercial buildings?
I believe the...
Two were approved. Yeah, two were approved.
So two were approved?
Right.
Okay. But the two were not going to go on this particular site. One was on this site, and one was on a site across the street.
That is correct.
Right, but they share a common driveway, correct?
Correct.
So that analysis was for the access driveway of Fons Corner.
Okay.
The other building's already built, isn't it? The one with the Dunkin' Donuts and the...
Correct, but there are two additional buildings planned and incorporated into that report. So what you have is you have a max build-out of two additional commercial buildings plus the apartment building, and you have the comparison of the apartment building replacing the 18,000-square-foot office building. So what they're saying in this report is, at max build of the entire site, there are no issues at the entryway at Fons Corner Road. And secondly, it points out that the trips per day...
Is less.
Is less for the apartments versus the 18,000-square-foot building that is already approved.
Is, but in the aggregate, once the others are developed, there will be some impact.
No, it'll be less because you're replacing an 18,000-square-foot commercial building or office building with 64 units that would generate less traffic in comparison.
Yeah, one-to-one, but they've, but I thought the baseline that they're using for this includes the proposed commercial buildings across the way.
Because the only change is that only building on. The other ones did not really change.
But when they do build that one, then we're going to have a concern.
Well, that was part of the original approval in the first place. So it's not, we're actually shrinking the total by swapping out the apartment building.
One for one, it's a little bit less.
What was previously approved would generate more traffic than what you would do now if you replaced that 18,000-square-foot commercial building with 64 residential units.
Correct, but in addition to that, was the chairman, what this report says is that upon maximum build, which includes the apartment building...
All the other buildings.
Buildings, there will be no issue at max build.
Even including this site?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Again, I raised the question for you as to whether or not you want to discuss sewer connection.
Before, I think before we discussed the sewer, I mean, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you have any questions.
No, we had a couple things. I know that we had some concerns about the architect. So there were some changes that were to the architect, the physical appearance of the building, at least the front elevation. I think there were some changes with regard, because I think it was proposed sort of as a flat-type roof system, even though it may very well be, but it has some gables to the front. So I think there've been some changes to that that have been made since the last time I think that we had a substantive conversation on this. In addition to that, there were some concerns I think we had with parking. I also know that we had some concerns about sewage load, which, you know, we'll get to. And I think that that brings a lot of people here that have some comments, I'm sure, as well. What were the other issues that you're concerned with?
I just have a question. I think the original application, was it for four-story building? If I'm not...
Correct, correct.
You eliminated, you eliminated.
We did, in fact. As part of the recommendations by the board relative to the architecture and to the height of the building, we made both adjustments. So we adjusted the architecture to incorporate gable-looking fronts and sections throughout both the sides, front, and rear. In addition to that, we eliminated one story. So it is a three-story building. It does have a basement walkout that potentially contains some additional studio apartments, but the overall, it is now a three-story building.
What's your total number of units?
64.
Still 64?
Still 64.
Okay, so you expanded the building then?
We didn't expand it. We actually incorporated the walkout basement to include units which it didn't have before.
You eliminated the floor, and you still have the same number of units, so...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we got creative, and we actually used that walkout section to add some studio units.
And your studio, that's why I'm looking at your parking count. And technically, in the town of Dartmouth, you need one for every unit. But I mean, in the studio apartment, I'm assuming, you know, either a single person or... Because you only provide, I think at that time, Mr. Gardner had a question about the parking, and he thought we needed parking for guests?
Correct, and we did, in fact, address Mr. Gardner's concerns, and I'm going to have Phil speak to that. We realigned the parking, we created some additional spaces, and I'll let Phil speak to it, but I believe we're at about two-to-one ratio at this point.
I just need you to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Ken Stein with Steen Realty and Development Corp., Pasca Mansit Land Company. Thank you very much.
Very, very quickly, just to echo that, hearing the concern from the previous meeting we were at regarding the parking, we did reconfigure the site plan, as you see in front of you, to provide two parking spaces per unit, which would be the town standard. So we have 128 spaces on the site to accommodate the 64 units.
Okay, so you did not meet the two parking spaces per unit on the previous application. You had less, is that correct?
We had less. We were just shy on a two-to-one parking ratio.
And I understand some of the units are studio apartments, that you may not need the two parking spaces, or one in the bedroom, or...
And that was our, through the chair, that was our premise on not having the two-to-one ratio prior, but we've accommodated that because it was a concern of the board.
Okay, I think that was Mr. Gardner's concern.
Yeah, that, so that part of it. The other is, I mentioned that there was no consideration for guest parking. You might have one and a half, one, one and a half, two parking places per apartment. Today, everybody's got a car, so that takes up those two. If I had somebody coming over on a Saturday night to watch the game, where are they going to park? They're going to park in somebody else's slot and get towed?
So you don't, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If I may.
If I may, Mr. Gardner, I can address that. So I think what we've done is we've gone to two spaces per unit, but in addition to that, we've transformed, as Mr. Truba alluded to, 16 of the units to studio units.
From two bedrooms.
From two-bedroom units. So we think that that in and of itself will allow for some additional parking spaces based on the two-to-one ratio being provided. And I think one other point that I can make is that we have an existing parking lot across the street from this building. It exists with approximately 30 parking spaces. 20 of those have been assigned to a new proposed medical building, which will also be across the street. That remains 10 unused, unaccounted-for parking spaces that exist across the street, and we can designate those as overflow as well. So we actually have two-to-one-plus, call it another 10 spaces.
How far away is that from this building?
It is, Phil, if you would, please.
So it is right here. We don't have the spaces shown, but they are right here at my fingertip. You can see the curve line.
I want an idea of where that is.
It's essentially across the street.
Across the street, less than 50 feet.
I wouldn't want to tell Joe Jones's wife that she's got to walk across there to the main building.
Well, it will be well-lighted, and there are crosswalks, sidewalks throughout the entire site, so it shouldn't be much of an issue.
Unless it's a snowy night, huh?
Hopefully, the people that have the contracts for the snow removal will do their job.
I think I understand your concerns, but really, when you take into consideration that there's 16 units of studio apartments that were replaced the two-bedroom, I think.
I got it.
That will be...
Yeah, I got that.
The other thing, too, is we have a bylaw. The bylaw says two parking spaces per unit. They've met that. We really don't have, that's sort of above and beyond what that town has said is necessary.
I get your conversation. I've got three kids, two of them are 33, neither of them has a car. One lives in Hartford, going to law school. The other one lives in Maynard, and he works remotely, and he gets the food delivered every day, or every week, or whatever they do.
What a fortunate young...
It's a new world. It's a new world.
It is different.
That pays for it.
All right, I guess, gentlemen, any questions? I have no questions. All right. So at this point, I guess we're going to move on to the sewage disposal issue?
Yes, I believe that you have two letters in your file, one from Keegan Werlin, counsel Barry Fogel. He's not here this evening, but I'll read his letter into the record if that helps. And then I drafted a letter addressed to Mr. Steen.
Excuse me, just one second. I don't think I have that letter.
I don't have it either.
Okay, I can give you a copy of it right now. Motion that we...
You want to go, I can go make...
Let's just take a look at it first.
I can go run and make copies quickly? Are you wanting to?
I don't, I didn't see this.
Mr. Fogel's letter is about the 80% monument in, oh, the wastewater world that essentially caps, that essentially puts on the town the onus of planning at that point. It's not in any way a limitation on sewer connections. It's a...
Excuse me, Attorney Bobrowski, do you want to accept this into the record?
Yes, we'll accept it into the record.
We'll make a motion that we accept the letter.
Can I get a motion?
Second. Into the record.
All right.
So Mr. Fogel's, go ahead.
All in favor?
He's second.
Oh, you're second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So going into the record is a letter dated October 9th of 2023 from Keegan Werlin LLP. I'm going to have her make a photocopy of this for all the members, if you'd be so kind. Can you continue on?
This is a pretty common topic in Massachusetts because many of our POTWs are at 80% of capacity. And my understanding is that the federal and the state government require municipalities to begin to plan at that stage for how they're going to, even more so, put wastewater into the system, knowing that there's probable expansion coming down the road. It's not a cutoff in terms of whether somebody can connect. I mean, think about it. There's capacity in the system because you're at 80%. You have to plan, and there's still 20% capacity. So it's not a shut-off by any stretch of the imagination, and that's essentially what Mr. Fogel's letter says. And then I prepared a letter as well. I'm not sure if you've seen this either.
I don't think we have.
Well, then I'll try to catch Michelle in a second. I'll run down there. But I just gave a basic overview of sewer law in Massachusetts. So the landmark case from the SJC back in 1968 called Clark versus Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners of Norwood. And the court interpreted the statute in order to determine the rights of somebody who wants to connect to the system. That would be Chapter 83, Section 3. The statute states in pertinent part, "If the Board of Health of a town making appropriations shall order land abutting a public or private way in which a common sewer has been laid to be connected with such sewer, or if the owner of such land shall make to the board or officer having charge of the maintenance and repair of sewers application to connect to the common sewer, such board or officer shall make the connection." And the case has been subsequently interpreted to mean that reasonable sewer capacity being available to serve the petitioner's building, they had a right to the connection. So the bottom line is that if there's sewer in the street, and it gets a little bit more complicated when there's a district, whether you're in or out of the district, but if there's capacity available, you have the right to connect to the sewer. That's the bottom line. And we think that that is appropriate and applies in this circumstance in that the other buildings in Mr. Steen's Fons Corner Development are sewered, so it's clearly in a district. There is capacity in the system, according to Mr. Fogel, and under the statutory provision, he's making application to connect it to the sewer.
Thank you.
I'm going to run down the hall.
That's fine.
Any questions that I can answer before I do?
Any questions, gentlemen?
Not at this time, no.
I have no questions. All right, so I'm going to take this opportunity. I'm going to take an opportunity.
Attorney Yeuman, did you say you had a question?
No, 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 no. No problem. I think prior to this, Attorney Agai had recused himself on this case. Excuse me, Dr. Agai. They're making you a lawyer today. Dr. Agai had previously...
A big smile on his face.
And he wants to make it known again that he has recused himself and making any certain determinations on this case. Thank you, Doctor, for reminding me. Any clarification?
What are you going to ask? You're going to ask, right?
Yeah. So, did you want to admit that letter into the record as well? All right, we'll wait for that.
Okay.
Well, maybe we can move on with the public portion of tonight's hearing. So is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this project here this evening? All right, there being no one else in favor. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition or would like to provide just further information about this petition?
Good evening. Tim Barber, Department of Public Works Director. And I'm not to speak in favor or not in favor of the project, just in regards to the sewer connection Mr. Bobrowski alluded to. Yes, you know, the capacity is around 80... Yes, the capacity is around 80%, and that is the planning stage to provide an upgrade to capacity for wastewater treatment facility. But there are other factors that come into play. So there's 80%, there's capacity for flow, there's BOD, which is biochemical oxygen demand, which we're currently over 80%. And then there's the outfall capacity, which we have been over 100% capacity with surcharging on our outfall. The high levels of BOD create high levels of enterococci, and there are violations to the levels of the bacteria. The additional flows from a lot of these, the multi-residential developments, this area wasn't, obviously wasn't zoned for this type of development, and the original comprehensive wastewater management plan did not, was not designed with this type of development either. Unfortunately, a lot of the pump stations along the line and the pipe sizes weren't designed for that type of concentration and flows. So at this time, we don't recommend this type of development connecting to our wastewater system until we can fully evaluate our system and come up with a plan on whether we can upgrade or we can make some substantial changes to decrease the capacity, increase the capacity or decrease the flow. We have multiple inflow and infiltration projects that are underway, and we have, again, we have an evaluation of our system.
Can you just, you have to understand, I have a limited, I have limited understanding as to how one of these public sewage systems actually works. You know, the basic concept is there's a pipe that connects to each house, it goes into a larger pipe along roadways, and then it all funnels down to our sewage treatment plant down off of Russell's Mills Road in South Island. And I presume everything from North Island at some point makes its way down there. Now, you referred to three different ways of actually looking at this: capacity for flow, DOD, and outfall capacity.
Right, so your capacity for flow is all the flow coming into the system?
So that includes rainwater?
Yes, so that includes II rainwater, exactly.
When you're referring to that, we're not talking the surface water from the rain when it rains. We're talking about when the groundwater makes its way into the sewer pipes, old systems with clay that interlock and all broken pipes, it seeps in, and you're getting clean water actually burdening the system.
Correct.
All right, that's called capacity for flow?
Well, that's, that is infiltration and inflow. So inflow can be surface, and infiltration is typically subsurface.
Okay, it can be both?
Yes.
So what about DOD? You're saying...
BOD is a biochemical oxygen...
What is it, V?
B with a B as in boy.
Okay.
It's the biochemical oxygen demand of the system based on the concentration of the sewage in the system. The high concentrations of the sewage in the system affect the treatment and the amount of bacteria. So that, those levels are over 80% and causing issues with the treatment system currently. And, you know, the treatment facility is over 30 years old. It's, basically, life expectancy was 2011, so it's been mandated for years and, you know, the desperately need of some upgrades and expensive upgrades.
What do you mean by outfall capacity?
The outfall is, so once treated, the effluent from the facility enters an outfall pipe and is pumped out, and actually goes out past Salta's Point, about 3,000 feet out into the, in the bay, out into the ocean. So that, the capacity of that outfall is consistently going over 100%, and it surcharges at the high points.
And what has been done as a result of these surges in capacity?
Just retention of adjustments in pump stations and wells at the treatment facility to retain flows at high volumes, to slow down the treatment process and slow down the pumping to the outfall.
So let me ask you this: what happens when we exceed 80%?
When you exceed 80%, you exceed 80%. It's just another level, you know, that you're increasing. Once you start having violations and you're exceeding, the combination of exceeding MCLs and exceeding 80% can cause the state to step in and either create a full moratorium on all connections and require a capacity upgrade prior to any further connections. And we have, you know, we're committed to, we have approximately 400 properties that have paid betterments into the system that have not connected to the sewer yet, so they have paid for the infrastructure, so we are committed to allow them to connect. They are not currently connected. So there are those flows, and we have, there's a multi-residential development on State Road that was, that we are also committed to with 260 units, plus and minus, that, which add to these flows as well. So if all of those units connected in the 400, you know, we may be pushing the 90%.
We didn't have much of a choice on that one. It was a 40B project, right?
We did not, yes.
I'm looking here, just briefly looking at a letter from, I believe, an expert. Yeah, I think this is curriculum vitae here, and it says, "We have not identified any record suggesting or indicating that the 80% threshold was ever exceeded or even approached." And I'm gonna read the sentence before that. It says, "A condition of the permit, if the average annual flow in any calendar year would exceed 80% of the facility's design flow, which would be 3.36 MGD," and that's million gallons per day? "The WWTF was required to develop a plan for controlling additional flow to the WWTF." And that's the wastewater treatment facility.
Correct.
Do we have a plan like that in place?
Do we have an upgrade plan?
Well, I think it says here that, I don't know if it's called, it's considered an upgrade plan, but it's considered a plan that was required to develop a plan for controlling additional flow to the WWTF. I don't know a lot about this, right? This is, this is really not truly within our purview, because if you read the statute that we have, but I'll get into that after.
So in order to control the excess flow, you'd have to create more capacity for that flow. So we're under, we're working on an evaluation of our current flows, and then we will move to a full evaluation of the collection system and the treatment system as well as the outfall system, so we can work on recommended design upgrades to create a plan to handle the excess flows.
So you got that going now?
We have the first phase of the evaluation.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions?
No, but it sounds like we have some confusion.
Least concerns.
Yes.
Attorney Newman, any questions?
I just, you say that we're at 80% capacity. What do you draw that conclusion from?
So based on our daily, average daily flows.
Somebody, the gentleman that wrote this letter, he went to the Town of Dartmouth Wastewater Treatment Facility reports that are filed with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and their records say we're not anywhere near 80%. So how do you draw a conclusion that we're at 80%?
Based on the flow charts. So, so is that, is that for...
One question. What is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit that the town has?
That's the NIPD's permit for wastewater.
And their records don't indicate that Dartmouth is even close to 80% according to this letter I'm holding.
For what time of year? Is there a specific time of year?
They said, what are they saying in here? I'm not, in 2022. And they say the EPA issued a medium wastewater treatment facility general permit for WWTFs in Massachusetts, and they told what the average flow was, and Dartmouth doesn't even hit the average flow. It's 2.82 MGD, whatever that means.
So that's why I'm... Million gallons per day.
That's why I'm questioning it. There's no record of it, other than what you're saying here. This seems to indicate that the people that have responsibility for looking at the Town of Dartmouth say we're not at 80%.
Yeah, so is that an average for the entire year, for 2022?
That's what it appears to say.
Right, so...
The average flow in 2023 reported for the WWTF facility is 2.82 MGD.
Right, so that's the average, so that takes into dry periods with low water tables.
Again, this does not exceed or even approach the 80% threshold. That's what this letter says. I mean...
So I guess what you're trying to say is there are peak periods that exceed the 80%, but the way that this is measured, it may not be measured just on peaks and lows, it's measured on an average over a period of time. What that is, I don't know.
Correct.
And I'm not professing to know anything about this. I've been learning bits and pieces of this as we go along.
So we currently have our consultant working on all of our flows from the past few years and extrapolating all the data. So there is, you know, there are wet periods of the year when we're over 80%, and then there are dry periods of the year where we're probably at 2.1 million gallons per day. So it's the peak periods in the, in the high volumes that we have an issue with. So we have, we have a peak, we have a peak of 11 million gallons per day at peak. And so we have been peaking during heavy rainfall, over that 11 million gallons per day on a 4.2 million gallon per day system.
Let me, let me ask you this, though. Rainfall shouldn't get into the system.
It shouldn't, but it does.
Right, right. All the pipes.
Yeah, so we have, again, our treatment facility is over 30 years old. Some of our pipe systems are well beyond 30 years old. We have, we have approximately 25 to 28% II in our system. So during, during rain events, or high water table and rain events.
I had no further questions.
All right. Do you have anything to ask?
So, Mr. Barber, do you, do you have, do you have any issues with the gravity line or the line, I'm not sure if it's a gravity, the one on Fons Corner Road? Do you have a capacity issue on that, that specific line?
I don't believe so.
Okay. They'll be tying to that line. I understand the effects downstream and all that, but...
We have issues with the pump stations, but that's, that's for the concentration of the flows and...
Right. And I, I mean, in terms of the BOD, and I think we can probably discuss that, and I don't think they'll be opposed to it, I'm assuming you're pumping to the line, right, with the elevation? Are you pumping, are you pumping, I'm not sure if I...
There'll be gravity here. That'll be a gravity system.
Gravity system all the way?
No, it'll be gravity to the pump station on Fons Corner Road.
And then they pump into, right.
Yeah, and then it'll pump to North Station.
To the, to the line on Fons Corner.
Correct.
Okay. So I think, would it be reasonable to say maybe we can recommend that you can do some kind of aeration or some kind of system to, before you pump? You know, does that be reasonable if you're concerned of a BOD or some kind of treatment? You know, I mean, we...
We would definitely welcome treatment at any facility. You know, there's, you know, we get a lot of, a lot of grease, a lot of foods, a lot of, a lot of these developments have...
Right, well, I'm assuming they're gonna have grease traps and MDC traps and all that. I mean...
I'm not sure. Would you, would you have treatment, grease traps? You've never done that in a multi-residential.
Excuse me, Ken Steen again for the record. I don't think that grease traps would normally be part of an apartment complex. One of the things that I think Tim and I talked about months ago, and we never followed up on it, but we talked about the II program that's in town. We talked about us paying into the II program so that we could potentially eliminate our actual flow. So our design flow in this building is about 11,000 gallons a day. The actual flow for garden-style apartments, which is, you know, proven, we've got data everywhere, is less than 50%. So we're probably in the vicinity of actual flow of about 5,000 gallons per day. So what I talked, mentioned to Tim months ago, and again, we both didn't circle back on this, but we offered to pay one-for-one, but even two-for-one II removal, so we could in theory buy our way into the system, which I think is part of the normal building permit process anyway, but I wanted to make that clear. I think, secondly, what we can offer is, Tim makes a great point, II is an issue, you have the periods of, you know, high water, rain, et cetera, and what we'd be willing to do is to put in a holding tank, which would actually hold the effluent.
Pump it off the car.
Yeah, yeah, and by the way, just to clarify it, so we are low on the site, but we actually own a parcel behind us that travels further downstream out to Ventura Drive, so we'll be connecting gravity to Ventura. And then Tim spoke to where the municipal pumping stations are, so everything we have is gravity, and we're not pumping at all. But certainly a holding tank, we'd be, we'd be willing to talk about that, which would handle the issue of the peak flow and, you know, capacity issues during the peak flow times. So that's kind of what we have to offer, and happy to work with these guys as usual.
I mean, even the grease trap is of 2,000, 3,000 gallon grease trap is not gonna hurt anything. It's a pretty $2,000 structure.
Sure, of course.
You can install one before your discharge. I think that would make, you know, I know it's not required, but, you know, it's probably good if you have people there frying, whatever, cooking.
Happy to do that. It's not typically something that we would do, but certainly, certainly that's on the table, and we're happy to accommodate that.
Because there's issues, concerns with the sewer, and we're trying to, so I don't think, I think this would work out if we can just indicate that some conditions that they have to work out with the sewer department or the...
Oh, I don't like to leave things open-ended, but, because if they can't come to terms, then what happens?
Okay, then shouldn't be any conditions then?
Well, I'm not saying that either.
No, no, I mean, with the sewer, we'll have to, you know, I... Okay, we'll leave it for discussion.
Mr. Barber, thank you very much for coming forward. You've been very informative. This is certainly a concern that we have to take into consideration moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Almy. I'm the Chair of the Public Works Board, and I'd like to add some details and then some observations. First, we have not seen it, had an opportunity to see the letter that was introduced to you. I think it's, would be, since that letter was written how many weeks ago? Might have been a good idea had we seen it. We would have been in a position to have a more intelligent conversation about it. We don't know whether what he's talking about is average annual flow or daily flow, because there are standards at different times. And there are standards for flow, there are standards for water quality, and we do have a limit on the outflow. That one, we are at 100%. Tim mentioned that we have had somewhere between 300 and 400 residences pay betterments. Think about that for a minute. Approved, zoned properly, they bought into the system, they haven't connected yet. So I view them as first in line, if you will. And the 40B project, I don't know how, whether this is the right way to describe it, but it's the state and pushing themselves into... it, but it's the state and pushing themselves in the line, okay, ahead of legitimate and potentially very beneficial projects. I have, I think the idea of this project is a good one. I don't like to stand up here and caution you about what your business is, but we are technical people. I've got forty-six years in water resources. I've run part of a planning department that did large industrial projects. I've been involved in extending sewer lines, okay? I've taught environmental studies at the University of California for eighteen years. So I know a little bit about negotiating. I am very hesitant to negotiate conditions in an open hearing. I suggest that you name the concerns, which I think we've discussed, and I suggest that you ask the applicant to meet with the department and work out in writing and have something in, something in writing, either as conditions or as plans, so that you can see it and have a solid basis for granting a variance. Remember, there's no right here, because the master plan and the sewer master plan do not account for this project. Again, I will not say whether I agree or disagree. I think the town needs these kinds of projects. This may be a very good project. That's not the point. The point is have certainty on how the wastewater issue is going to be dealt with, because this is not the only project of this type that we're aware of. Okay, and so we need to have a little bit of order, so you don't get four, five, six more of these projects in the next twelve months. All right? Because that would put the town really in a, in the corner, and I, I don't want to be there. I don't want to have to say no. I want to work this stuff out. Okay, so that's, as an appointed official with the Public Works Board, that's my perspective. Okay, so, any questions?
No, thank you. It's fair, thank you.
Thank you.
A question for the applicant, actually. So when do you anticipate construction or completion of this project? Because we're not, we're at the eighty percent, so we're gonna start planning, I assume, if we are at the eight, if we are at the eighty percent, we need to come up with a plan that puts us out of the eighty percent soon.
Sure, certainly, Mr. Chuba. I would say that, you know, it's gonna take a few months to get through the rest of the process. Obviously, if, if the board chooses to grant the variance for us for this use variance, there are other, you know, hurdles that we have to go through, such as site plan review, we have to work things out with DPW in one, one way, shape or another. So, I mean, I think the very earliest would be, you know, six to eight months in terms of a start, and then on the outside, within, within the twelve-month window of the, the approval.
And then it'll be another year before you get any occupancy, probably?
Yes, I would say about twelve months in a building this size, yes.
We're talking two years from now, if everything went through. We saw what happened with the two forty-B, I mean, lasted what, three years, the permitting process?
They still haven't started anything.
Right. So, I think what I'm getting at is if we're at the eighty percent capacity now, and we have another two, three years to figure out where-
Well, I'm not convinced of that yet.
I'm just saying, that's the worst-case scenario, right? But I agree with that, maybe we can, we can continue this another hearing, just so you can have a chance to sit down, and like I said, with the probably sewer department, just come up with something that is reasonable and not, that you can work with, and then we have a solid plan that we can, you know, rather than leaving it open for, for negotiation.
Mr. Barowski, if I may, just before you say anything. So, we're discussing this with members now. We, we obviously, we can take the approach, if we look at forty-A, a strict, constrict, a strict interpretation of forty-A, Section ten, that deals with a variance. I think one could argue that it's not within our purview to deny someone a variance if they meet all the criteria because of a sewage overflow issue. I'm not saying that's what we should do, I'm just saying that we could take that position. If we collectively decide that as a board, then we don't even consider the issue of sewage overflow and what demand is putting on the system. Because we're not here to decide who can build and who can't build because of a septic system. One could argue. The other thing we can do is, because we're supposed to be good stewards of the town's interests in its development and its growth, that we take into consideration, and I'm sure an argument can be made as well as one of the prongs, that we should consider all impacts to the neighborhood, community, to our town, and see if the petitioner would have an opportunity to try to work something out, as been, as has been suggested by the, the gentleman from DPW, that they try to work out terms. But the thing I don't like about that is, obviously, town's gonna start here, they're gonna start here, and hopefully, there's some middle ground. But I don't know whether or not we're gonna stop precedent moving forward, that in larger-scale, multifamily development buildings, that this is what we're gonna do every time. So we have to be cautious about that, too. And I'll be quite frank with you, I'm just sharing this, my thoughts with you, and I don't have a position one way or the other, quite, quite frankly.
First, before we get into, I think, just let's have a discussion to see whether or not we can, this project or this particular site meets the criteria for a variance. Not looking at the sewage, just looking at the statutory requirements for, for issuing a variance. And we'll take it from there. If we feel that, yes, we can go this route, then we can continue, rather than keeping the applicants coming back and forth and, you know. Well, I just want to clarify-
So what do you suggest that we do? Because I-
Let me, I have a question for Attorney Barowski. So, is, this is a use variance, correct? There is no, there's no special permits with this either, it's just a-
It's just straight use variance.
It's not dimensional either, you're not asking for any dimensional relief, it's just a use.
That's right.
So that's, also, I agree with you that we might, looking at the statutory requirements, you might want to look at other, maybe whether this is less detrimental, more detrimental, I think, you know?
Well, there's a, there's a proposed draft decision that we could just look at, right? Just, we want to look at that criteria, right? The first prong is there are circumstances related to topography that especially affect the subject property, that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structure or land is located. And the petitioner is arguing, this is their position on that. We're just, we're just speaking, we're not moving forward any decision. We're just discussing.
This is a discussion.
So, the petitioner's position on that is the topography of the lot accommodates an apartment building rather than an office building. The apartment building can make better use of the grade change in the rear of the building, reduce cut and fill, and maintain existing environmental conditions. So that's their justification or their rationale to believe that they support that prong.
That was what Mr. Cardero explained earlier.
Yes. Let's go to the second one. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. And remember, they explained about office space is really not something that we're using post-pandemic, but this is their explanation. Denial of the proposed use and building, an office building, would involve a substantial hardship to the petitioner due to the top of-
What, what page are you on?
I'm on second page.
No, next page.
Third page.
Okay.
You were not there before, sorry.
No, I, I was looking, okay, I got it.
So I'll read that again. Denial of the proposed use and building an office building would involve a substantial hardship to the petitioner due to the topography on site and the current economics of post-pandemic office rentals. And he's gone, he's provided some sites, sites to either public, periodical or publication-
Data on-
Data, even the movement in the city of Boston, which I don't know how much relevance that has, but that's what they're using to support the position.
Well, also, the topographical constraints are going to result in premium costs that are a hardship, and that's the first part of that answer.
Right, but that existed previously with, right, with, with the commercial program.
When you could borrow money at three and a half percent.
Okay.
Desirably, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. Now, this is the one that, I believe, this prong is the one where you could arguably say that the sewage, that the impact of sewage on the sewage treatment plant, and the load that it has on a sewage treatment plant, you could argue that that is one of the prongs that we, we should satisfy in order to feel comfortable in granting a variance for this type of use. You want to say something?
Yeah, just as a caveat in there somewhere, whether we do something or not about the sewer business, sooner or later, somebody's gonna have to, because we're gonna be capped out, and there's gonna be nothing happening.
Well, we're hoping that the powers that be and the fathers of our town have thought about this and put together a plan that would alleviate this in years to come, but based on what Mr. Barber has indicated, they're only in the assessment stage of this. They don't even have an assessment as to exactly what the overload is.
Well, he's also said that he's got other projects in the works that haven't been connected or even approved yet.
Yes.
May I address that issue, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
So in the memo that I gave you that I wrote on the second page-
Unfortunately, we didn't read because we didn't have it.
I'll read it to you, because the SJC went on in the Clark case, and in addition to saying that if you have capacity in the system and a pipe in front of the house, you're entitled to the connection per statute, they also said, "The sewer commissioners are not empowered", I'm quoting, "to postpone presently sought connections to give precedence to connections contemplated for the future." So it's who comes first, it's just a straight waiting list, and if your application is in, even though there's a neighborhood that wants to connect at some point in time because of a betterment, you have the right to connect if there's capacity in the system and the pipe is in front of the house.
Thank you for that clarification. I put a lot of weight on what you say, but I would still like to read that case myself and, and sort of dissect it if I could, but we'll get to that, too. Now, the fourth one.
Before, I think maybe we should make a motion that we-
Oh, that's right, we didn't do that. So I entertain a motion to accept the letter from Blackman, Barowski, Havery, and Silverstein dated October sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the letter from Attorney Barowski to address to Mr. Steen dated October sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's now part of the record. Thank you for reminding me about that. All right, then the last one is, "The variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw." Their response is, "The proposed use will support uses in the office industrial district. Granting the variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw." Now, I, it wasn't raised, but one of the things I, I've thought of is, there, there's a growing number of office spaces, medical offices there, and I think a building like this would also serve for the people that work there. There's no reason why they have to drive to Westport and Bedford to go home. If this became available, I'm sure that people from those buildings that work there would much rather be close to work, or maybe even within walking distance, rather than driving and commuting. So I think that there's a, you know, that there's a, another benefit of that, of, of having something like this in that general area.
That was a point I made on page two of my memo, Mr. Chairman. You look at, look at what's happened in this district, the law school, South Coast Surgery, Tegra Medical, Harvey Building Products, Bristol County Sheriff's Office, House of Corrections, St. Anne's Hospital. Who could have imagined that this district, humble when created thirty, forty years ago, would have all of this there now, with people driving there every day?
That's the reason we, there's an overlay, and they changed the zone a couple of times already. And who knows in twenty years what that zone's gonna be? Oh, if, I, I think it'll be built out anyways, but, I mean, it's a fluid situation, but I-
So I'm here, look, I'm here to hear from you gentlemen of whether or not you want to take the position, and if you're, if you're of the mindset that we, under, under the requirements of forty-A, Section ten, we don't have to consider sewage, we don't have to even look at that, but when you look at the third prong here, desirable, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. Now, is that within the realm of public good? It has an impact on all of our residents within our town. So if that's something that we feel that we should have the petitioner address with the DPW, then we can have and, and sort of give them those instructions.
I think we should, I think we should always act with caution.
Well, that's one way, that's one way to pursue it. How do you feel?
I feel like the applicant is willing to sit down, let, have them in a meeting, and if they're reasonable, they can come back and say, well, we tried to do something that is reasonable, but, you know, we can't do what we're asked to, then we look at this and say, you know, hey, maybe it's fine what you did. But at least give them the chance to sit down, they're both willing to sit down and come up, and I'm sure the applicant said, indicated that you're willing to work with Mr. Barber, or maybe some kind of, uh, capacity, uh, a structure to hold, maybe hold the sewer, try to pump it at a certain times, or that would alleviate some of the capacity issues that, concerns that he has. And maybe put in a grease trap structure before, or something like that. Well, that's, yeah, holding tank, but, and, you know, we'll, we'll come back and, you know, see what you can, at least we can show we are concerned about other departments and their concerns, and we're concerned about this town, too. And again, we're, you know, we're zoning board of appeal, and we, we have the obligation to look at every case, and I think this case is a good case, and it has merits for a variance, so I, that's how I feel. But I think giving the applicant another chance to sit down with the town and try to work it out, I don't think another, you missed the last two months because of the quorum, so, you know, another, maybe a couple of weeks or a month, I don't think it's gonna, you know, hurt you, or, since this is a two, three-year project, so. Uh, that's my position on this, but-
Thank you.
I concur with that, yeah.
Attorney Human?
I, I agree, I agree with that as well. Although I'm a non-voting member of, for this hearing, I think it's an appropriate use of that piece of land as opposed to an eighteen thousand square foot office building, which they have an absolute right to put up. So, this makes more sense than the eighteen thousand square foot office building.
Now, a lot of, what about with requiring the applicant to meet with-
That, that makes perfect sense to me as well.
Okay. So I just want to know how this board wanted to move forward, because I sense that this is gonna be an issue with other larger projects in which, and we've got to decide what position we're gonna take on that moving forward.
My concern is, is the town now saying there should be no more building in the town?
Well, I don't know exactly what they're saying.
No, but that's the impression I'm getting.
One of my questions, yeah.
I don't, I didn't hear that directly, but I did hear that, you know, they're just concerned that we're sort of, we're, we're approaching or at eighty percent, sort of either a flashing yellow light or a flashing red light, maybe not red, but maybe a flashing yellow light, that we have to certainly plan accordingly moving forward and be mindful of, you know, the future impact of some of these, and I understand what the case, that you're alleging that the case says, that we're not supposed to look at the future impact from other potential projects when we're granting this now, we're only supposed to look at this, because those are just potentially supposition, they may not happen, they may just sit the way they are in moving forward. So I was just concerned about how, what type of a position the board wanted to take, whether we were just not going to consider it at all. Because I'm always, you know, reluctant to put a, a petitioner beholden to the demands or the requests of another agency. And I just want to make that clear as well. So when there are negotiations that, you know, we always, you gotta look out for the best interest of the town, but also consider the applicant and the concerns and what they're dealing with. Counsel, I, I had a gentleman back there, Mr. Tattelbaum, had raised his hand.
Dave Tattelbaum, I am the Chair of the Select Board, and I do speak for myself, as usual, although many of my members feel the same way, and I'm also Chair of the Long Range Planning Committee, which is a newly established committee. I understand this is a, this is precedent-setting, because in my tenure here in town, we've never been faced with an issue like a, a thirty-to-forty-year-old septic and sewer system that is on the verge of trouble. And I think it's, as far as this particular project goes, I have no opinion about it, that's not my job, that's yours. However, I think that there's a, I would call it a red flag, in terms of what we do going forward in this town, because we have some, we're gonna either rebuild, add on, or destroy and, and put a brand-new system in, it's gonna happen. We are in the midst of, as Tim said, doing studies to tell us what to do and how to do it, and they do take time. Unfortunately, in town business, feasibility studies and studies to get the answers take time, but we're doing that with a water plant, we're doing it with a water and sewer treatment plant, because we need to do it and face that issue. I think the days are over at this point in time for your board not to take into consideration the long-range plan and the cost of the town of trying to do this right. We need housing in town, and this could be a great spot for it, but we can't, we're not operating in a vacuum, none of us. We need to understand that this is a precedent that we, that is, we've never, in the, the recent past that we've ever faced before. We have to face that as a town. The Long Range Planning Committee is, is made up of people who touch every part of this town, whether it be the DPW, whether it be the capital planning, whether it be the, in the, the town administrator, so that we're looking at it, because it's so, that's how critical it is. And I think it's, it's, caution is absolutely what we have to do, and we have to take into consideration decisions that you have made in the past, that I've heard it before, and I agree with the pass, on a case-by-case basis. This is no longer a case-by-case basis. This is no longer a case-by-case basis. This is a town-wide issue and it's critical. And there's more going to come up as a go-along because there's other people knocking on the door. And how we do it and how we decide who was in and who's out, that's not my decision, but I think it has to be considered. And appreciate, it's not an easy decision, and I understand the position of trying to do the right thing as well, but this is, this is different. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Don't bring out, like, MPG and that stuff because not, I can't know.
I think it was MGD.
Okay, that too.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right. So I guess at this time, Mr. Bobrowski, if you could come up. Would, I think we would entertain a continuance so that they could meet with DPW, see if they could work out some terms that would take into consideration, you know, some of the concerns that obviously members of the board feel that we need to take into consideration in rendering a decision. But I do want to make sure that, you know, both parties understand, and when I say both parties, both the DPW and both yourself, that they're going to understand that this is something new. And I'm always cautionary about imposing things on petitioners if I don't think that they necessarily line up. But having said that, how much time you think you're going to need to meet with them and come back to us with some sort of a, a list of conditions that, or a list of components that need to be added to the project?
I, we're ready tomorrow, but I, but I don't want to.
But the real, to be realistic, 30 days, we could put it off at the December date. What do we got on, what do we got for December?
December 13.
What do we have on that date? Any other cases?
December 1.
One, okay. We could put you on for December 13th. We do have the holiday next week. That's a broken week.
I was actually going to make it to the REVA dinner that night.
You were.
I'm on the panel of neutrals and we're invited to come as guests.
REVA's real estate.
Sitting with all the ex-judges of the Land Court is really inspirational. But if I have to miss it, I will.
I'm being recorded, so I can't say anything about that.
I didn't mean to take the mic here.
That's the only day we have open, that's the only date we have in December scheduled for a hearing.
Have to be January. What's your?
January 10.
10?
Okay, can we?
December 13?
Yep.
All right.
I may ask your forbearance if I decide to go to Boston to Zoom or phone in?
Yes, I don't know. Do we still do that? We don't do hybrid, do we? Well, some of these boards are doing, they're doing Zoom. They do all Zoom.
Franklin Zoning Board of Appeals has never had anything but a Zoom meeting since March of 2020.
It can? Okay, so if we need to do that, we can do that. All right.
Thank you.
I'm just old school. I'd much rather have in-person. I've been pushing for in-person, you know, two weeks after we were released. All right, good. That's how I feel about it.
So we'll work assiduously and see you in a month or so.
And whatever documents need to be signed, obviously you agree to sign them to continue the matter?
Extension.
For the extension.
Yes, I'll send Michelle something in the morning.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We need to make a motion that we continue variance case ZAV 23-6 to December 13, 2023 meeting.
December 13th.
December 13.
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
For the next one, too? I already said it. Yeah, you might have been away. All right, moving on with tonight's meeting to the next matter. It's variance case ZAV 23-9, which was continued from September 6, 2023. The petitioner, excuse me, gentlemen, we're being recorded. Petitioner is Parallel Products Solar Energy LLC. The owner is 718 Realty LLC. Representative is Michael Minow. I might have butchered that, Attorney Michael Minow. The subject property is 718 Dotman Street, also known as MAP 128 Lot 204. It's located within the General Business District. We've already previously at the prior hearing have waived the reading of your butters list by motion, which was approved. The petitioner in this case is seeking a variance to construct a large-scale ground-mounted solar array with canopies, and is seeking relief under Articles 375-44.4 Design Standards. So at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner come before us once again and introduce himself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you pronounced it perfectly. And good evening, members of the board. Michael Minow on behalf of the applicant. So when we were here in June, there were some questions about the number of canopies and the location of them and whether that could potentially be scaled back a bit. We also had discussed that due to the configuration of the site and the existing building, the fire chief had specific areas where the canopies, in his opinion, needed to be located in order to allow for adequate fire safety and access to the building. So we've submitted revised site plans dated August 2. And on the plans, you'll see that originally this canopy down here, which is one of the, I'll say, more problematic ones based on the feedback we've received, has been moved back some, so not infringing on the setback quite as much. These, originally two canopies are now combined into one. And there's now a canopy three here, there's one eliminated here. And overall, the total number of canopies was reduced from seven down to six. So the applicant definitely took the concerns to heart and went back and tried to scale the project back, you know, within the constraints of the site and working with the fire chief in those locations, as I described, that allow for the canopies to be sighted. The applicant also submitted some visual renderings, which the board had requested, which show is generally how these canopies would appear. They're very attractive and they have certainly a lot of positive attributes compared to a traditional ground-mounted system. Again, the bylaw only defines large-scale ground-mounted systems based on the fact that there is not a separate definition for canopy-mounted systems and the fact that these are technically still mounted to the ground even though they're up in the air. That's the definition that we're working under and therefore we need the relief from the 75-foot setback requirement under 375-44.4A. Additionally, I don't know if we had specifically requested this last time, but we'd also need a waiver potentially of the screening requirement. Given the fact that these are elevated canopies, I don't know how you could realistically screen them. So that's also part of the relief that we're requesting in addition to the variance. So if the board doesn't have any questions for me about these changes to the site plan or the renderings, I'd like to have the project engineer, Scott Daggett from Farland Corp., come up and just kind of walk through the particulars of the changes to the the canopies and locations. And then if there are questions that are more site plan-specific, he can probably address those best.
Sure. Do you have any question or? No, I have any questions, then. Do you? I'm sorry, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, just before, so I'm assuming this layout addresses the concerns of the fire chief, correct? Or this is, so that would be for the engineer? Okay.
We don't, we lawyers don't step on the toes of engineers.
My name is Scott Daggett, Senior Project Manager for Farland Corp. So in general, we tried to meet the requirements that, you know, based on your request, moving some of the canopies. Other, I mean, other than, other than what's shown here, we, like Mr. Minow had said, we've combined these two canopies, and we had taken this one canopy and we had moved it up here. Other than what Mr. Minow had covered, I, you know, I believe, I believe it pretty much speaks for itself.
But he had a concern. You can, I'll let you voice it.
Well, I think this layout addresses the fire chief concerns, correct? He had a, he had a concern about the, his circulation and
In the ladder truck.
Apparatus going around the site. He's okay with this layout, with the, with the location of the proposed canopies, correct?
My understanding that he is, yes.
Okay. Yeah, other than that, I, I don't, I think they, they look attractive and they, it's a pretty good
Well, they look attractive, but.
Accommodation.
Go ahead. Do you have any questions of the engineer?
Not at this time, no.
How many feet does he, how many feet are you now from the street?
How many feet we are from the street currently?
21.4.
21, 21.4. Uh, no, let me see. Yes, 21.4 feet.
We were, we were 5.9 when we came, and you guys asked us to move that back. We moved it, I'm sorry.
AJ, identify yourself.
Tim Cusson, Vice President of Business Development with Parallel Products, the project proponent. The concern down here on Solomar was we were really close at that time. When we first came down, we were actually 5.9 feet. And then you guys wanted us to take a look at that. We actually moved that 21.4 feet.
15 feet extra.
So they need a 53-foot variance, 53-point-something variance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Do you have any further questions, Bob?
No.
About you, Olivia.
No. I have nothing further.
I have one. All right, Doc. A medical point of view on exposure to all of the solar panel of the people who are around, have you ever thought to go to Board of Health to review the new plan and to see the exposure of the solar panel to the people that are working over there whatsoever? Thank you.
I think Mr. Cusson can probably answer that question better than I.
We have not, as an individual or as a company, undertaken any studies that, you know, prove or disprove anything. But as an industry and as an acceptable practice, you know, solar panels are now used throughout the country in almost every community. And we're not aware of any hazards from working around or being around any solar panels that we're aware of.
But the answer is, there is some restriction because after all, for the long term, it could be dangerous. And I would suggest at least to run it by Board of Health, Board of Health of Dartmouth, and let them review before you do all of those things. Thank you.
If I could just add something.
Certainly, Attorney Minow.
So the solar design plans that were also submitted as part of the original application are still the same, even though the, the location and configuration of the canopies has changed. And the Board of Health did, I believe, review that as part of the normal course when reviewing the petitioner's application. So there are more details about the specifics of.
Do you recall if they made any comments?
They did make some comments and we try, when we addressed your concerns, we also tried to address their concerns. Some of their comments were locating the, moving the the array that we had close to the, what if, the school, the
I can read it.
Little People's College. We removed that, we removed that array altogether. So because they were concerned that it was facing.
Reflection.
Yeah, so we removed that array altogether. They also wanted us to, I believe, concentrate the panels over parking and paved areas, which also resulted in us moving that back 21.6 to more over, directly over the paved parking surfaces.
So I'm going to read this into the record just because of the fact that this has been continued a few times. And I know I read this originally when the petition first came to force. These are the comments from the Board of Health. I'll read them for our viewers at home. "The solar arrays proposed by this application are of concern as they are pushed up against property lines. One property line being a daycare with a playground adjacent to the array. Will the array cause glare to reflect off of windows and cause reflected sunlight at times in the play area? Additionally, the slope of this array appears to pitch toward the playground. This plan does not show any barriers to prevent the directing of the stormwater from the panels towards the off-site play area. We are at a time of elevated environmental awareness, especially in watersheds that discharge to marine waters, as does this location. Impervious areas are a concern since the stormwater that falls upon paved or other impervious surfaces does not allow for seasonal biological attenuation of watershed pollutants that exist in stormwater. The arrays cover existing landscaping and will increase impervious areas upon the lot when the locations could be shifted to reside over pavement." Which is addressing what he said. "The placement of the arrays should be shifted such that they do not cover existing landscaping and reside only over impervious areas and thus place entirely over the existing parking lot and discharge any runoff to the paved area where stormwater is currently managed by whatever existing controls may exist." And I think by moving it away from the property lines, they now have areas where the water actually will run off to rather than running off to adjacent properties. Is that correct?
That's right. We reduced that as much as physically possible. We pushed them onto the parking lots. They do overlap a parking lot edge generally because you have the, the foundation's right on the edge of the parking lot, so they overlap a little bit. But we did reduce it greatly. We removed that the one canopy entirely that was close to the Little People's College. We removed that totally from the whole project.
It's not there any longer, not in the design, so it's not.
Yes, we removed it to revise on the plans they have.
So that addresses those concerns.
Yeah, and I think one other item that was mentioned in there was the potential for glare. I think we did discuss that last time. The angle of these is such that, and there's an anti-glare coating, I believe, that Tim mentioned last time in June, that greatly reduces any potential impacts of glare.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
Not for me.
All right, so at this time, I'm going to call upon anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project. There being no one, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this project or offer any additional information? All right, there being none, I guess that we can move to some discussions here. Can you provide me the proposed decision that's been prepared? Passing along. That's for you. So these are just some proposed or suggested findings. And I'm obviously open for any type of input from any of you gentlemen. This was, I had the petitioner actually put these together so we can use these as sort of a guideline, if you will. The subject matter, excuse me, the subject property, which consists of approximately 8.6 acres, is located at 718 Dotman Street and is known as MAP 128 Lot 204 on the Town of Dartmouth Assessors map. The subject property is located in the General Business Zoning District and is improved by an existing parking lot and existing building. The petitioner is seeking a variance from Section 375-44.4A of the Dartmouth zoning bylaw, which provides that for large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations, setbacks from street lines and all of the property lines shall be at least 75 feet. The Dartmouth zoning bylaw defines large-scale installations in Section 375 44.2 of the zoning bylaw as large-scale, in parentheses, 250 KW or larger, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. The bylaw does not provide a separate definition or regulation for canopy-mounted installations, and the board finds that the proposed solar canopy system fits the definition of large-scale installation. I don't think they have another fit that they can go by, right? I think it's based on what we have for bylaws.
Or either it's a structure because it has a roof and so, so they need, either way, they need a.
Variance. Five, large-scale installations are permitted by right in the, in the General Business Zoning District. The application of the petitioner proposes six canopy-mounted arrays to be sighted in the locations depicted and delineated on a petition of site plans prepared by Brian J. Murphy of Farland Corporation on plans dated August 2, 2023, which were submitted to the board in support of the application. The petitioner also submitted a solar design plan detailing the design of the arrays and highlighting the benefits of the system. The petitioner also submitted a two, submitted two high-resolution renderings depicting an illustrative visual example of these types of solar canopies. After being, after initially hearing the petitioner's application presented at the June 21, 2023 meeting of the board and to address feedback received from the board and the Dartmouth Fire Chief, the petitioner revised its plans to configure, excuse me, to reconfigure some of the arrays so as to increase the distance of some of the arrays from property boundaries and reduce the scale and impact of the project. These revisions are incorporated into the August 2, 2023 site plan. The petitioner submits that the arrays must be of a certain size and number for the project to be viable, and the location of each array was determined in subsequent and the location of each array was determined in substantial part based on specific requests of the Dartmouth Fire Chief. All right, so reading on. The board reviewed the application, materials and testimony provided. In accordance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw, Mass General Law forty A, the board finds that due to the shape and topography of the land and nature and viability of petitions intended use, the requested and desirable relief is appropriate as a literal enforcement of the zoning by law by law will present a substantial hardship to the petitioner. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purposes of the bylaw. Additionally, the intended canopy mounted arrays are substantially different from a typical large scale ground mounted system, which is how the building commissioner and the board has classified this project. The bylaw does not distinguish canopy mounted systems from ground mounted systems. And in this instance, granting the requested setback relief for the sighting of the six canopy mounted arrays would be substantially less impactful and thus far less detrimental to the neighborhood and the budding properties than if the application were for a setback variance for traditional ground mounted arrays. Also, due to the elevated nature of the solar canopies, the board finds it is appropriate to waive the buffer and screening requirements of three seventy five forty four point D of the zoning bylaw. All right.
What was that? The last kid?
Yeah, because he's saying that there's a requirement under forty four D for a buffer. Take a quick look there, forty four D. Forty four D.
Point four.
Well, forty, is it point four or point three?
Point four.
Point four, sorry. Point forty four point four D. Forty four D. Buffers, this is design standards and it's setbacks for large scale installations, setbacks for street lines and all of the property lines shall be at least seventy five feet. So he's looking for A, but D says buffers. A natural buffer shall be provided around the entire facility, including the large scale installation and any accessory structures for the purpose of screening from view, the same by a person standing at ground level from adjacent streets and properties. See, this is more applicable and I think that's just what the attorney Minow was trying to get at was this really makes a lot more relevant sense for a ground mounted facility rather than, but I'll read on. Such buffering can be existing vegetation or landforms or new plantings. Said buffer shall be at least thirty feet deep and shall be continuous, save only where access drives must pass through the buffer. Said buffer needs to conform with a setback requirement of subsection A. As determined by the Director of Inspection Services, such vegetation shall be of a type that will grow at least ten feet within five years of the completion of the construction of large scale installation. When vegetation is planted, at least seventy five feet of such planted vegetation shall be evergreen species. Landscape plans as detailed in three seven and shown.
So landscape buffer, but they already have some landscape.
They already have some, but this is really, and this is probably why we need to have our bylaws amended to actually, to actually.
It's a, I mean, it's a, I mean, it's not.
It's not, it's not really applicable. All right. So we know what it is, but we're going to grant you the relief on that as well.
Absolutely. I just wanted to know what we're granting. That's.
Me too. All right. So, and for restrictions, our usual, usual restrictions, uh, that they got to restrict, that they have to, uh, apply for all necessary billing permits, uh, and all town boards and all that other stuff.
I have a question. Number four, what could be the four criteria? Am I correct? They're not broken up as they usually are.
Yeah, they're not broken up. That's how they do it. That's fine. We're going to go the same way. Just, that'll be the way it is.
This way.
This way. No, no, it'll be like this. That's fine.
It's fine.
It's fine. Yeah.
It's a different format, but it, it dresses the same thing.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah.
No, no, listen, I know, I know that you like to keep people consistent. That's fine. They drafted it. I'm good with it. All right. So gentlemen, do we have any other questions at this time before we close the public meeting or do we want any comments? Oh, Doctor.
If seventy five feet from the street, is it by law by Massachusetts? Because they want prevention of exposure to radiation or is it local?
It's a local bylaw. It's our bylaw. That's our zoning bylaw, but this bylaw truly was intended for the, to be applied towards ground mounted um, solar farms, if you will, large scale solar facilities. This is different. This is up on, I don't know if you've ever been to Bristol Community College or if you've ever been by, um, Howland Place, the old Howland Place building in the back there, that's what they have. BCC has it. Those are quite tall and I don't know if these are going to be the same height, but they're within the height requirements. And there's also one behind Howland Place.
Would you like to consider at least to have to the plan to be reviewed by Board of Health or not?
They already addressed their concerns with the concerns that they laid out. I read them out. Those were their concerns. So they reviewed this application. Those were their concerns and they pretty much addressed all of them, um, at least that I can see. Thank you. All right, Doctor.
There's also one down on Silver Street, down in the south end, Silver Street.
Silver Street.
Probably, yeah.
Well, I haven't seen that.
Down there.
Well, and I can only presume that there are going to be more.
Yeah.
This is what, this is what we want.
Actually, they're not that, that unattractive either and they serve a good purpose.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they're not even close to two hundred and forty kilowatt two.
All right, so they're not even.
I don't think you're going to get anything close to that in any parking lot in Dartmouth, probably.
Anyway, um, uh, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So gentlemen, um, if you have to make, if there's any comments with approving this, if we want to move forward in approving it, I would entertain a motion to approve it.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve variance case ZAV twenty three dash nine with the findings and the conditions as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
It took us a while. All righty, moving on. So the next case is actually a two-part case. It's a variance and a special permit. Yes. Oh, that's right. Uh, if we just can, uh,
take a recess.
If we can take a quick recess. On the record, uh, next matter we have is a two-part case. It's a variance and a special permit. It's also a continued case. It's variance ZAV twenty three dash nine, continued from September sixth, twenty twenty three. The petitioner is Parallel Products, excuse me. I, I misread that. The variance is ZAV twenty three dash seven. It was also continued from September sixth, twenty twenty three. The petitioner is Gabriel Barudy. The owner is George Rashad. And the subject property is six ten State Road, also known as map one sixty five lot two. And the property is located in the general business aquifer protection overlay district, zone three. This matter has previously, previously been, um, published and we waived the reading of the above, above list. The petitioner in this case is seeking a variance to build a thirty foot by thirty four foot addition onto an existing business building for office space. They're seeking relief under article eighteen, section three seventy five dash eighteen point four B setbacks and article thirty three, section three seventy five dash thirty three point two minimum setback dimensions. That's the first one. Um, I think we can open up the second one as well and then. Is that how we normally do it? Do we open up both or do we just open up one at a time? We open up both, right? Yeah. I forget. The next one is special permit ZSP twenty three dash three, same petitioner. It's also continued from September sixth. The same petitioner, same owner, six ten Smith, uh, State Road. The general business aquifer protection overlay district. And the petitioner is seeking a variance to build and construct a thirty by thirty four foot addition onto an existing business building for office space. And what they've got here is a situation in which they're going to be increasing the impervious surface area from an, an existing percentage, which we'll get to, to a greater percentage that would require relief and is by means of special permit from this board. So at this point in time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner or his representative to come and present his case.
Good evening. Uh, this is George Abirashad. My name is George Abirashad. I'm the owner of the property.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Abirashad. It's two words.
Rashad. Uh, Rashad. Okay. Sorry about that.
So, uh, from the last time, we did update, uh, our building. We smaller the size. We did, uh, upload the new plans. And we've done it to twenty six, twenty eight by twenty six instead of thirty by thirty four to reduce the, the building size.
So it's no longer thirty by thirty four?
No.
All right. So see, the problem is, is I didn't really have these dimensions on here, uh, on the plan itself. Do you have a larger, larger version? This I was using, I was looking at this on the computer. So I don't even have the dimensions of the old building or the existing building. I don't have, I didn't have the dimensions of the new building. All right, continue on. So, uh, do you know exactly what the dimensions are?
Yes. Now it's to, uh, do you want the, all the broken dimensions, like everything between the existing and the proposed addition?
I'm not trying to be difficult. I know you've been before us a couple of times. We're getting really close, but I will say this. Typically, when plans are presented to us, we have dimensions of what the existing building is and what the proposed building is. I don't have any dimensions. I don't even have the square footage of each one of these buildings unless it's somewhere else that I can't see. But, oh, I see the lot area. I do see building area. I did, I did see that. I did see the building area. Um, but I don't know if that was, I guess the proposed is seven hundred and twenty eight square feet.
Yes.
And the total now will be seventeen ninety two. So I guess the existing building area is a thousand sixty four, but I don't know what those dimensions are. So I've actually put together just a draft suggestive, suggestion decision. Um, but I left all that blank because I didn't have the dimensions. So you're telling me, see, here's the problem. Once we write this in here, if it's not what that is, you're going to have to, and the building inspector reviews this and he says, well, the, what they allowed was twenty eight by thirty and it's really twenty nine by thirty. You got a problem. You're going to have to file and come back before us. And I don't have a plan showing me those exact dimensions.
I did upload those plans that's come from, uh, the surveyor.
Yeah.
And another one's come from the, from the, the other one that we make it like, smaller.
So you're saying that the new addition is how many, what's the dimensions of it?
Twenty eight by twenty six.
All right. And where do you see that on the plan?
That's on the back of the building, of the existing building.
No, on the plan, where does it show me on the plan that it's twenty eight by thirty six?
Which plan do you have?
I have the plan that was just handed to me. I want you to take, you can come up. The date on this plan is September first, twenty twenty three.
Well, yeah, this is the one that's, that's, uh, that's.
I understand what you're trying to do, but there's no dimensions on there for this building. And when I write a decision, you'll be, you're being asked, you're asking us for some specific relief. All right. And we want to work with you. All right. And if I, if I'm loud, that's just me. Okay? All right. So you're asking for specific relief and we, I want to consider giving you that relief. I'm not the only person. There's other, there's two other people. You need all three of us to vote in your favor. And I'm looking at this plan and when I write the decision, I'm supposed to say the dimensions of this building. And I'm also supposed to say the distance it's going to be from the lot lines. I see a couple of dimensions. I see three point eight. I don't see where the existing building is. I don't see a dimension there. I can sort of interpolate that maybe it's three point eight, but I don't even see with the existing building, what that dimension is from the Westerly Lot Line. I don't have that to mention. Because if you're keeping it consistent, that makes me feel better, but I don't even know if that's accurate. It looks like it is, but it may not be. Um, and I don't know what the dimensions are of the existing building. So, but I want you to continue on. So you've, you've made the building smaller. I appreciate that. You've also put in, you've also put in place some recharge, uh, for, uh, water runoff recharge from the roof and that, that stuff, which is, you're certainly getting closer. Um, I've also looked at the percentages that you have here, uh, as far as the increase. Can I see what the decision is? Cause I, I'll see it. Well, pass this along. So at some point, when I was looking at, I guess, a plan, I had some figures here of, let's see. No, that's the variance. I want to see the one for the overlay. Is it, no, is it the last page of it? No, it's to be, oh yes, the last page. Okay. I have here something showing me that it was, went from twenty one point five to forty two percent. And now I'm looking here at this plan and this plan shows me that your existing, that your existing percentage of lot coverage is sixty point six. And it says building, drive, patio and walks and your proposed now puts you at sixty eight point nine.
Yeah.
Is that what's accurate?
Yep.
All right. So obviously I have to change this, but we'll worry about that after when we get to it, if we get to it. Um, what else do you want to tell me that you've done as changes here? Cause I see a few additional things here on the plans that weren't on the original one.
We did the drywall.
The drywall, yes.
Okay. And, uh, we did this, like we aligned it with the building to make it like farther away from the, from the street, from the street line. We did the change. We put the gravel instead of asphalt.
Continue on. We're listening.
Uh, gravel instead of asphalt and from the backside, we did it all as well. We shrink it a little bit. And same as well, there is a proposed for the sewer change, like sewer pump, the gravel detail and the trench all the way around for the gutters that draws to the drywall.
Okay.
This is the recharge system.
That's the recharge. Well, that's the drywall that he's talking about, which is the recharge system. Okay. What is the shaded dock area, the, with the black and, and?
That's the gravel.
That's the gravel area?
Yeah. Which used to be the parking, like asphalt. We're going to get rid of the asphalt and we're going to put the gravel instead of asphalt.
Does that count here? Crushed stone?
I don't know. Um, so we, I know that we have, if we have stone, if we have, let's say, just three quarter stone on a driveway, that is considered impervious surface under our bylaw.
No, gravel is impervious.
Gravel, so, but.
Stone is pervious.
Stone is pervious. So it's the other way around. So gravel is impervious.
Yeah.
So.
Crushed stone.
And you're saying he's going to do crushed, crushed stone. So it is.
Impervious.
It's impervious.
Okay.
Is that part of the calculation? Cause it doesn't say here. It just says buildings, drives, patios and walks.
It says in the grass and the woods, the percentage, they added it like as a grass and woods.
Is DPW taking a look at this plan?
Yes.
They have. Okay. I'm going to ask you to step back just for a minute. Okay, great.
So you're showing a table where he goes from sixty something to sixty eight percent, sixty eight point nine.
Excuse, could you identify yourself?
Uh, I'm sorry. You don't remember? My name is Robert Almy. I'm the Chair of the Public Works Board. I'm also a registered professional geologist in two states and with forty six years' experience in various topics associated with groundwater, including infiltration and stormwater. All right. So, um, Tim and I have looked this over. Tim had to leave. Um, he asked me to explain to you that the applicant missed a credit for the infiltration.
Which is the ten percent.
Which he gets ten percent for. So that would, should drop it from sixty eight point nine to fifty eight point eight percent. All right.
It's actually decreasing.
So I want to make a point here. This project is mitigated and is actually more beneficial than the, the existing conditions. Two thumbs up for the applicant. Okay? So, um, from the standpoint of, um, percentage impermeable because he's capturing roof runoff and putting it in the ground. percentage impermeable, because he's capturing roof runoff and putting it in the ground, that gets him to where he needs to be.
But he gets that ten percent credit based on the total lot size, ten percent of the total lot size, right?
Uh, ten, uh, yes. Yeah.
I know, I bylaw the way that's written. But the thing is, I don't feel comfortable where the actual percentage is something less than what's on the plan. I would want the plan to reflect the right, the correct amount.
Yeah, I can't fix the plan, but I can tell you that it's a good, it's a good proposal from a mitigation standpoint. They've done, from what we've seen, even though it isn't reflected on the plan, they've done what they need to do. All right?
So conceptually it works, but you know, just with the, the charts that's provided, it's not accurate.
Yeah, and it sounds to me like there are some other details.
There's some other details that's lacking. All right. Can you come back up? What else can you tell me about this?
Like, uh, about.
So the building itself right now, what do you use the current building for?
It's an upholstery business.
A upholstery business?
Yeah.
That you do for customers. How much traffic do you get at this site on a daily basis?
Not much. Mainly, we travel to the customers. We do, not much. We do, we do travel to the customers.
You travel to the customer?
Yes.
But so let's assume, well, I don't want to assume. Let, let's say this. On a daily basis, how many people come there with an item of furniture that needs to be upholstered?
Two persons a week mainly, two a week.
Two a week?
Yeah.
And other than, and how many employees do you have on this site that would be parking a car here and working on your upholstery?
Parking a car, three. I have five employees.
You have five employees, but only three with automobiles?
Yes.
And how many parking spaces are on this site?
There's around, right now, there's around ten. Because like there is a parking, three parking spot on the, on the state road on this side, and there is the rest on the other side.
Well, are these on the property or are these on the street?
On the property.
On the property. But you don't lay out where, where the parking is gonna be.
Okay.
I, I kind of need that. Because if I make a decision, you're grant, you're asking for, we call it in the law, an equitable form of relief. That's really what you're asking for here. And we, you know, we look at these and I want to work with you, believe me, and I don't think this is a bad idea. I really don't. I think it's actually, it's gonna, we can make it work, but we haven't necessarily, and I just want you to take down a list of some of the things that I have as concerns. I need the dimensions of the buildings. Of each, basically the proposed building and the actual existing building. I'd also like a measurement from the existing buil- building to the property line. The Westerly property line. There's nothing there on the existing building.
It's written on this one. There's nineteen point eight.
That's from the street. That's from Hill.
From the building to the property line.
To the, to the Westerly property line.
Where's the?
North and south. So it's the Western property line. There's nothing there telling me what that is.
Three point eight.
That's the new building. What about the old one?
Oh.
The new one is this here.
Okay, got it.
I don't see anything here. Now, is it close to three point eight? Yeah, probably. But I'd like to know what that is so I can make my, say my decision. There's an existing building.
You, you.
Yeah, yeah.
You understand what he's saying?
This side of the building.
From old building to the property line.
Old building to the property line. I'll, come on up and I'll, I'll show you where I want it. From this building to this property line, I need to have a dimension. I don't have a dimension from here to here. I have no dimension. I have it from here to here. I see that, the nineteen point eight. I also see it here, but I don't see anything here.
Okay.
All right?
We're gonna edit over on this slide.
That's right, correct.
It may be the same.
It's the same. It's a lot.
It may be, but I just need to make sure that that's there. In addition, I'd also like to have some delineated parking spaces here that would show how the parking would be in relation to the layout of the building.
Okay.
Okay? I'd like to see that.
All right.
Gentlemen, um, is there anything else? I'm sure I'm missing something else, but is there anything else you think that you would like to see in order to render the decision on this?
No, I don't. You have a proposed decision here.
Maybe I have a proposed decision, but some of it's not accurate at this point. It is a tight lot, right? We're talking less than five thousand square feet, but it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming building there already.
If, if he gets his ten percent credit, those numbers are right, and he gets his ten percent credit, he goes, his pre-existing non-conforming is now less than what it is right now.
That's right. For, with regard to the issue of the special permit for the overlay district.
Okay.
Only that. So that, he's best, he's actually, and that's the point he was trying to make, that it's improved.
Right.
But the percentages here in that chart are incorrect. They didn't take into account a bylaw, a bylaw which provides you a credit for ten percent of the total square footage of the lot. You can deduct that calculation from where you would be.
Because you put in the drywall.
Because you put in the drywall. And, you know, all this that, that's been required of you, we would have likely not approved, we, I know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support your request without having that drywall installed. You understand that? Okay. So I have a proposed decision, but we're not gonna get here today. So we're gonna, we're gonna entertain a motion to continue this matter. What do we have? November? November twenty-ninth. Do you think you can get a plan prepared between now and November twenty-ninth that sets out some parking in, in these dimensions?
Yeah.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna write on this one, my concerns here, just so that he knows. This is this, it's this here, it's that there, and then you know what the others are. I'll give this back to you.
So quickly, these, these are exactly the same plans, yes? All three of these are exactly the same? Do you know? These, there were three plans here. They're all exactly the same?
Yeah, the three probably the same. He didn't know if there's three.
I didn't know whether it was three separate.
Well, we could have handed them out.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm thinking Bob could have looked at it.
I'm sorry. I should have been more.
There you go.
Squinting down here in this little.
I'm gonna write on here. Parking. Dimension.
It's not written on.
Al, that was very mean.
Dimensions for these two and also here. Credit. Yeah, does he have to sign an extension?
Yeah, okay. So we're all set with the extension?
So you think that by our next scheduled date of November twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
That you could have a revised plan? Okay. So I'm gonna take it that you're asking us for continuing to provide a revised plan, right? So gentlemen, will we entertain a motion to allow the petitioner to continue the matter to November twenty-ninth so he could provide us with a revised plan?
I make, you want me to make it?
Go ahead.
I make a motion that, uh, at the petitioner's request, that we continue, uh, variance ZAV dash twenty-three dash seven and, uh, special permit ZSP dash twenty-three dash three, uh, to, what date?
November twenty-ninth.
November twenty-ninth, so the petitioner can revise his plans.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
We're close.
They're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you. And you have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you too.
Yeah, we can give that to you. All right, moving on, gentlemen. So, let's see if I can find this here. We move on to the administrat-, another administrative portion of tonight's hearing. First is review and approval of administrative minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Any comments, gentlemen?
I have none.
I'll entertain a motion.
I gotta find my stuff.
You want me to, I'll make, I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three as written. September twentieth, isn't that what I said?
I thought you said thirtieth.
No, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as written.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Sorry if I misheard you. Next, and the final matter that we have for administrative, uh, portion of tonight's hearing is to review and approval of minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, special permit SPVA dash twenty-three dash two, five sixty-two, Reed Road.
I have nothing to add.
I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I make a motion that, do I get it? You got it.
I'm taking it.
You, okay, go ahead.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting for, uh, case number, soon as I locate it here on this. What happened to it? Number SPVA twenty-three dash two, five sixty-two Reed Road.
I have a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right, gentlemen, we're getting close to the end of tonight's meeting. Is there anything else that we need to discuss? Any old business, new business? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, hold on.
Isn't there something that was about to do with Julie and?
Yes.
Sitting at my desk at my home.
We're gonna put it off for the twenty-ninth. Don't, don't forget. It was a lot longer night tonight, but we'll put it off for the twenty-ninth. It could be quick and easy. Yes, that's fine. So we'll put it off for the twenty-ninth. Fair enough?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, gentlemen, anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Aye, the ayes have it.